Aye. Okay. Are there anybody that have, has a, something other than what we're talking about tonight in the agenda? Okay. Public hearing agenda. Has a plan development at three, four, seven, five, nine Sykes Road, Kessie Engineering and Consulting. It's now seven oh one, the public hearing is now open. This is a legislative land use hearing, the subject of this hearing is amendments to the city, St. Helens Community Development Code. The applicant is Kessie Engineering and Consulting. Because legislative proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, the commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare a conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Hearing none. Does anyone from the audience want to object the ability of commissioner to make a fair decision? Hearing none. Rules for conduct of the hearing are set forth on a handout on the table in the back of the room. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, those of the hearing, close of record, and deliberations and recommendations. Following statements are to be made at the commitments of the hearing. Standard for recommendation by the commission shall be based upon St. Helens Municipal Code seventeen dash twenty dash one twenty-one. Standards for legislature's decision, St. Helens Municipal Code seventeen dash one forty-eight, there's zero six zero, planned development allowed and disallowed. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable standards previously listed, or such other criteria in the code or plan in which a person believes applies to the recommendation. Request for a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a planned development overlay. And there is an intent to develop this property. And I'm sure that's why everybody's here. And there are several steps in this case. Because the owner has chosen to go with the planned development route. Tonight is one part of that, and it's the planned development zoning overlay. So what an overlay zone is, is you have your base zone, which has all your basic rules about density and setbacks and uses allowed and things like that. And the overlay zone is another layer. And sometimes that other layer is added complications and things people don't like, like floodplain rules. Ah, more rules, oh no. The planned development overlay is a benefit in that it provides flexibility when you can determine that it's warranted. And what the planned development does, it allows you to play with your setback and lot size standards, but the density still stays the same. So there will be additional public hearings if the applicant choose to continue with this, which I imagine they will. And sometimes you can do them all concurrently. But we had to work out some details with the actual subdivision part of it, and in fact, we just deemed the subdivision and sensitive lands permit, because there's wetlands on the property yesterday. And so we're kind of forecasting that those other hearings will be before this body next month. But I just don't understand, there's kind of a multiple step process. But in this case, it's legislative. The review is for the overlay zone. And because it's legislative and it's a zone amendment, it will be reflected on our zoning map. This is a recommendation to the city council, it's a city council decision. So that's kind of the primer of what's going on. The property, there are two tax lots, three, four, seven, five, nine Sykes Road. You have one detached dwelling on there. There's the wetland I had mentioned. And then part of the site's forested and part of it is, looks like pasture land, there may have been horses, there is something, given the fencing and stuff around it. And it's owned R seven, and it's surrounded by residential development. As always, we have standards we have to look at to see, well, do we recommend yea, nay, or something else? And so one thing we look at are the standards for where a planned development is allowed or not. And in this case, well, there's other standards to look at too, but the first thing is shall not be allowed on lands with less than two acre minimum, shown on the comprehensive plan map as developing. And you have this developing and established category that applies when you annex lands. And the only significant factor I can find in the code is it affects your density computations. Regardless, we can consider this developing, which makes it easier. Because there's less, you know, little details to look at. So it is more than two acres in size, the total size of the property is about four and a half. But they are, there aren't two separate lots. And so one of the modifications or the condition in this case is because the planned development is meant to have a certain size applied to it. And so we have a recommended condition that a development that utilizes the overlay include the entire property, so you don't have any leftover that doesn't meet the size requirement. That's the intent of the property owner. So I don't think that would be an issue, but we just want to make sure that's in there. And so what this overlay zone does, so if you adopt the overlay zone, you know, it sits there. Then you have to have a proposal that uses it. So you could conceivably have the overlay zone, and then the applicant, for whatever reason, says, well, I don't want to use that, I just want to use the standard subdivision rules. I don't know why they would want to do that. But it doesn't force you to use it, but it's certainly there to be used. So the next thing we have to look at are the statewide planning goals. And just a couple I want to focus on here. Goal five, goal five talks about inventorying and preserving natural areas and stuff like that. And in this case, we do have a wetland, our wetland inventory calls it MC two, which is significant to us. And we have these rules in our wetland code that kind of works with the planned development, that when you do have a substantial amount of wetland encumbrance, which this one does, and one of the attachments in your report is a wetland delineation which has been done. So it's recently been done, it was approved by the Oregon Division of State Lands last year. And so there's no guessing on the size of that wetland. And remember that our rules also require a fifty foot upland protection zone, not reflected on the state's delineation, but that takes up a little bit more property too. And so what you have is you're able to preserve the wetland, but also maximize the potential use of the property with the overlay. And so when you have a wetland, this is a really good example of why we have this overlay. And it allows you to use the wetland for some creative things, which we'll see, like I said, probably next month, to enhance the quality of the development. A wetland isn't necessarily a detractor, if you include it in the development, it could be a positive thing for those living there. The other goal that I probably wouldn't have spent much time on, but I think we need to now, is goal ten for housing. So this is something that the Fair Housing Council does, and I went to a planning director's conference earlier this month, last month, recently. And they were kind of talking about these letters that they've been getting. We've had one before. But we, and we got it just yesterday. And so they kind of talk about compliance with goal ten, please beef up your requirements for goal ten, et cetera, and so forth. Because we got these so recently, they're not in your packets, we had to give them to you. Just a hard copy. So what I did yesterday and with the wrong date. No, I did this this morning. It's not, it's March thirteenth, not March third. Is I proposed some draft responses. And there's a whole page of stuff there, but the bottom line is the planned development overlay doesn't change the general outcomes of our zoning and comprehensive plan schemes. It doesn't allow an increase in density. And it doesn't change the type of dwelling unit possible. And so I feel that it's not an issue as raised by the Fair Housing Council. They do, on the last paragraph of the letter, note, and I guess this is on behalf of two agencies, the Fair Housing Council and the Housing Land Advocates. Both nonprofits, I believe. Urge the commission to defer adoption of the proposed amendment until goal ten findings can be made. And so if you concur with the page I wrote up, that's what I intend to incorporate into the revised report to the council. So we can go over that more if you want, but I just wanted to highlight that. And then another thing we can look at is our own comprehensive plan, and again, we have the wetland there, so it totally makes sense that we have this overlay to maximize the use of the property while honoring the density. Because if we honor the density, then it's arguably harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. So our recommendation is to recommend, to recommend at the city council approval with the modification as noted. Any questions?
So questions, so questions regarding the wetlands and how they're going to be protected should wait until the next hearing?
Yeah, yeah. Because that's, because when we look at the subdivision, that's when we look at the design, and then how the proposal complies with the design. But I should mention that some of the wetland protections are driven by chapter seventeen forty of our code. And there is a provision in that chapter that allows flexibility for development with the planned development and development agreement. And it lets you use some of that protection zone as part of your lots, so that's kind of what they're going for. But the point, as it applies to this proposal, is our wetland chapter specifically calls out planned developments. And so there's a direct connection from having a significant wetland into these planned development rules. And that's why I believe it makes complete sense, this is, like I said, this is why we have this overlay option. Which I should add, in my decade and a half working here, I have not seen a new planned development overlay application. I dealt with some that were, had already been adopted, and they were kind of at the end of their and they kind of died in the recession and went away, but so it's not the most common thing. And so, once again, I, every time Julie's here, well, this is something I haven't seen in many years, so you just
She brings it with her. Thank you.
So we still have an R seven lot in the development, or will that be?
Yeah, the base zoning doesn't change, so it's still R seven. And what the planned development does, it says, well, you can throw out your lot size and lot dimension requirements to help you fit lots into, you know, a funky, funky lot like this, it's irregular in shape, has a lot of wetland, but your density computations stay the same. And so it still honors the intent of the R seven zone in your density, your housing type, but lets, gives you flexibility otherwise.
So I have a question, and I'm not sure whether I can ask it in a cohesive and coherent way. I'm getting the big picture that we can have the same number of houses, but have them closer together in order to protect wetlands. I wonder about the actual water runoff into the wetlands and whether the roofs. I guess that's all those details that need to be worked out later, isn't it?
Yeah, you will have an opportunity to speak. Yeah, and it'll be clear at that time, what'll happen is, the applicant will have an opportunity to give their spiel. And then people who are in favor, neutral, and opposed may speak as well, so. But yeah, that would be addressed.
So that would be the sort of mitigation that might come with the planning? To make sure that roof drains don't create a mess in the wetlands or whatever? Just one of many things that would be facilitated.
Yeah, yeah, when we get into the design. I should mention that the planned development, the standard setbacks of the R seven zone do apply on the perimeter of the property. And so where you can have homes within development that may be closer than normal, the ones on the perimeter still have to meet the setback, and so you're not violating a neighboring space with the reduced setback. Because they're not in the planned development, and they may want to retain their airline space, which is the purpose of setbacks.
Does that hold true for the easement for the power lines?
Yeah, the easement is there, and you're stuck with it, and that's just, and that's another encumbrance, really. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, if we could hear from the applicant? Come on up. Now's your turn. Did you state your name?
Are you, are you the applicant?
Applicant of what?
Are you, are you the neighbor?
I'm a neighbor of the property, so I live right next to the wetland.
Oh, okay. This, this would be
This is, this is time for the applicant for
Yeah, applicant gets to talk first, if they wish.
Hi there, I'm Rich Bailey, Rich Bailey Construction, I was hoping, apparently there's a confusion with Mr. Kessie. I do not see him here or there, so I'll do the best I can for you, I'm a builder, not an engineer, so. Like I said, what we're trying to accomplish there, we have a big wetland. I build custom homes mainly, but I want to build something in St. Helens that I can get somebody an option other than a track home, a starting home option, I want them to get the same same quality at a smaller footprint than, and not have to be a track home type builder. And I appreciate the city helping us, and Jacobs helping us through this system, like I said, with the cost of the land and developing and everything like that, we have to maximize as many lots as we can. We could have done more lots in this with what we're doing, but we, I want to keep the lot sizes as big as I can. I said, the money we're going into engineering and wetland studies and I wish I could look that over again, but it's all, we're, we're there, we're on for the home run now, and it's, like I said, we've planned on doing a good development. We want good neighbors, you know, I'm a local guy, my wife and I, Ellen, have been in business since ninety-three. I've been in St. Helens my whole life, and I, like I said, I'm not going away, so I want to build something that we can be proud of here. I don't know what kind of questions I can help you with, I'm not, except I'm not the engineer that came up with the design, but it's been kind of a a year process, basically, to get to this point. Any questions you have for me, I'm more than happy to
And they don't have the subdivision plat in front of them, because it's just the overlay in this case.
How many, how many lots do you anticipate?
It is total of eight, seventeen or eighteen counting the house that's on there with the, with the four and a half acres. So, but like I said, we have a huge wetland, and that's why irregularly shaped lots come in, is we're working around this wetland, trying to get the lots in there and stuff, and and so we're trying to do the best we can with what we have, you know, and like I said, the wetland and the extra fifty foot the city wants is we're counting the house as eighteen.
Yes.
I'm just trying to make a living, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not here for abuse, I'm just here to tell you what I'm trying to do, like any other builder would. I'm trying to make a living and do the best job I can for St. Helens, I hire mostly local people. And I put a lot of money into this community, and I try to, I try to do by the rules, and that's what we're trying to do, is by the rules, of what we've been told the rules are, so. I appreciate your time, I'm here, I'll try to help with any questions I have, but but like I said, I'm not the engineer, I don't know what happened to Mr. Kessie tonight, so. Okay?
Okay, thank you for testimony.
Thank you.
All right, do we have testimony in support of the application? I see none, except the builder. Testimony in opposition of the application. Okay, I believe that you were up before, would you like to go? If nobody's going to come up? Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, my name's John Paulson, I live on five nine three 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 Mountain View Drive. And my house directly borders the wetland there. And I, my only concern with this thing is, was there any kind of a wetland mitigation done, and is that available to see what it's going to do? Because to her point, I talked to, I have a civil engineering buddy that works for Granite Construction, the one of the biggest civil engineering design firms in the US. And he told me what I should look at and ask some pointed questions about it. And because the problem is, since I, I've been there since it was new, so I bought my house, it was just a foundation, and I bought it from the builder, and so I've been there since day one. The water that flows through there, not always, but it can be a raging torrent, I mean massive, it's almost flooded out the lower division down before where I live. What's that, Bar Avenue? Yeah, down there. And it goes actually across the road, literally a flowing river, almost flooded, it actually has flooded his house out in the past. He's not the original owner of it. And then it's come over to his house, which is directly across from the wetland. So literally, the water's a flowing river across the highway, or my road, Mountain View Drive, and then it goes down into the lower divisions down there. So, kind of two things is, and maybe you can't answer the questions now, it didn't sound like he's done any kind of a mitigation, but is how would the drainage be channeled from the subject property, would it be through ditches? Overlays that plumbed away from the wetland out to the main sewer system, that's to her point. And then, will the subject property be maintaining the existing flow patterns where the water flows today? And if not, exactly where would the stormwater runoff from the subject property flow to? And then what will be the difference in peak flows downstream on the subject property? Because if they divert that away, you can't have all that runoff just running directly from the houses down through that wetland, or flood. Guaranteed it'll flood, I mean, it floods without it today, right? So it's going to do one of two things, it's either going to dry up the wetland, or make it a lot wet, less wet than it is today. Or it's going to be a flood plain. And that's my only concern, really, the whole thing.
We're a little bit lost because the engineer's not here, I'm sure you could answer a lot of that.
And, and really, that, that becomes a design question. And drainage is probably addressed in the subdivision application. But I worked on it a bunch, and then worked on a bunch of other stuff, so it's not fresh in my mind. They're good questions, though, at least now we're kind of prepped to what your concerns will be once we get to that point.
Can I ask, is Bar Avenue at the base of Mountain View? Because I've got one map here that's got Bar Avenue in the summit view.
Yeah, it's right here. This is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, it's the next division below, yeah, so it's basically
Well, that's what I'm looking at, but over on the other map, it's Bar Avenue, the same street.
It's this subdivision right here. There's Bar, Bar Lane.
That's what I was going to ask, if there's a way that you can show us up on the map, like what you're talking about?
Yeah. So my property is right there.
Okay.
And so that's the wetland and the flow of it, I have it from the original planners, the developer did it for the map, and it shows the boundary of it where it goes. And that's basically it, that's where the water flows. It comes all the way down through here, and his house is actually sitting almost at level. And they had to replace the wood in the house because it actually got so high at one point in time. We share the wetland. So it's flowing down through here, and then it goes across this field, and then that whole field's a swamp, and then it drains down into this development.
So basically, you're, you're one meeting too early.
Yes, sounds like it.
But, but we appreciate you bringing it to our attention, because when you come back the next time, we'll be prepared.
Did you also sign in on the back sign in sheet? Okay, I just wanted to get your name right. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for opposition?
I am the guy. Either on the high side, I'm on the low side. I'm the one that gets the water. My name's Larry Scott. Five nine three oh nine, Mountain View Drive, St. Helens, Oregon. And I tell you, this wetland, when I first bought that house and I moved into it, the first thing is, I pulled up the crawl space and I looked underneath, and there was a foot of water underneath it already. So I called the real estate lady, I said, what do I do about this? So she said, I got a contract to come out and look at it, it just happened, I was lucky, the guy that went ahead and looked at it said I was the one that went ahead and put the plastic underneath it, he said, the kind of drainage you have underneath your house is kind of like a bladder type drain underneath the house. He said, you lay plastic down, water comes up, it kind of fills up, and it pushes over to one side of the corner and it drains out. Which is the reason why I paid two dollars and something on my water bill, so that I can have drainage for the city. Okay, so, the thing, the thing is, my concern is, if I, I did have a hole in it, busted, it was busted and broke, so he came in and laid plastic. I keep an eye on it, I'm watching it very carefully, we have a problem there underneath my house. It does flood underneath there. But long as I keep, I've been keeping an eye on it so far, another, another thing is, I keep an eye on, the city does not do this. Never see them? They do not come out and maintain the flow on that drainage, ever. I do. I go out there and I make sure that that culvert, the lower side, the upper side is so high, it never goes through. Never, ever goes through, there's two culverts. One, never, water goes through. Neighbor over here said the skunks like it, but that's about it. The skunks like using it.
Culverts under Mountain View?
Mountain View Drive there, the road, it never, the upper one never, ever gets any water through it, never. So there's a drainage problem there on that. I got the one, I keep open. I keep gravel in it. I maintain it. I make sure I keep it deep enough to try to get enough flow out of there, you know, to make a, a flow. There's always water there and sometimes it comes down there. I even have, like he has mentioned, even had it where it's going up and over the road. There's a drainage problem there. Again, by the, how much water do you require or how much wetland? I don't know what it does, but I'm concerned about flooding my house out. That's what I'm, I'm concerned about. If it does damage or something to my home, then I don't know, you know, what I can do because it's a city problem. I mean, it's a, it's a wetland. It's a water drainage. It's just what it is. So I don't want my home to flood out where if it does go up into the rafters, into the home, I don't have flood insurance. Maybe I should be thinking about flood insurance, you know, if it does. But like I said, when I first bought, I looked underneath there. There was a foot of water more underneath it. The plastic tony thing that basically is drained. I know in St. Helens, we got a lot other properties around. They's got sump pumps and everything. I'm not the only one that has that problem. But there is a drainage problem there. Even right now, existing right now, there's a drainage problem. So it's something I think the city needs to look at, evaluate, look at it. If they're ever going to do a development, any more development, they should be looking at the drainage now. Water comes off Sykes Road. It comes down, down the ditch. It all comes off the hill. It comes down, a lot of it comes down the ditch. If you wa- if you ever step out and go out there, and I have, I even walked in my rubber boots. A lot of that water comes down, comes down the ditch and it comes into the electronic place right there on Sykes. It goes across his property, comes right behind my house, my property behind it. It's not my property. It's behind my property. It goes in, the majority of that water comes down through there. It does come off the hillside, but the majority comes down off through the ditch system, down off Sykes Road. So you need to look at the ditch system that you have. It stops. It stops right there. It just, it just funnels down through there big time. It closes off the ditches. I looked at the ditches. The culverts are there. A lot of them are plugged up. You even go to the corner on, on Mountain View Drive, it stops. It has nowhere to go except to the wetland. You might want to evaluate, look at it. If you do, on the drainage on that side of the, of the road. Culverts, there's just nowhere it goes. It's, it's just got to go there. But you, you got an issue that where do you go with it? Cause you're going to flood somebody else out. You know, you're going to need to evaluate and look at it. So that's my, my biggest concern about it is, uh, again, uh, the drainage is, there is a problem there backing up. Especially we get a lot of snow, a lot of big rain. Boy, it flows through there big time. And believe me, city's not watching it. I am, because I don't want my house to flood. So you guys need to consider that and look at it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for the testimony. Is that a designated flood plain? That area?
No. Well, it's not, it's not a federally-
That's what I mean.
-recognized area of special flood hazard.
Okay.
Of course, those maps aren't the best.
That's right. So you couldn't get flood insurance?
Yeah, I've looked at that map and that, uh, you can't see that.
Okay. Do we have the next person in opposition?
My name is Sean Henderson. I, uh, I live on five-nine-three-one-two Mountain View, um, directly across, um, the street from Larry. So I'm on the map. Here's Mountain View. This is the place that supposedly is being developed. Um, but I'm right here. So the water that he's talking about runs right through the crotch.
Can you grab the microphone? I'm sorry. It's not going to pick up what you're saying. Thank you.
Okay, uh, can everybody hear me?
And you can, you can, uh-
He can take it off.
Oh, yeah. It's cordless.
Take it off.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, uh, where Larry was talking about was, uh, right here. So Larry's house is right here. John's house is right here. Here's the crotch that they're talking about where the water runs through. Here's where I live. So the water goes underneath Mountain View and this becomes a lake. But thank God you guys allowed me to dig a trench there and, uh, was able to, but the water gets about three feet deep. And, um, I think the fish will be coming up next year. So it's get so deep. But anyway, um, I'm concerned because, um, when I bought, when I bought my property here, I see what's going on over here and I'm terrified that Mr. John Com- James Comstock will sell that to a builder. Um, my biggest thing is I just spent, um, about seven grand on, on a professional, came in and put a sump pump system under my house. I recognize a couple of you people here actually when I came to you and asked if I could build on my property and you guys said no. You said it's a wetland. And then I asked you, why is my house there? And I had no response. And now, now I'm wondering why we have a builder that would want to build on a wetland. And that, and that, that's kind of my concern. My, my father, he built five homes. He still lives, still living at the, at this time. Not one home he built on top of water. Doesn't make any sense to me. His experience, unless they're going to put sump pumps, a lot of the, a lot of the homes in this area have sump pumps, water issues. Um, it's a, it's a big financial issue for homeowners. And the people that aren't living on the wetlands, they don't care. They're not living at the wetland. They don't have to deal with the water. So, you know, my concern is that somebody would have built on the wetland behind my home. So, you know, I hope I make myself clear. But I do pray at this point that James Comstock, that I personally know, will not sell to a builder so they can build on a wetland.
How, how old is your home, Sean?
Nine.
Okay. So part of what probably happened, um, that the home was built there and then you came back and maybe had some less than desirable, um, outcomes, is the city adopted wetland rules in two thousand and three. And so those are the rules where we determine certain wetlands are significant and subject to particular protections. When I see a lot of the developments that happened prior to that, there are houses that are right next to creeks and, and on top of wetlands. And so if, if that subdivision occurred post-two thousand and three, um, it's possible your house, well, it, it would probably look a lot different than it looks now. So that might be kind of why you had some weird answers, I'm, I'm guessing?
I built that home three years, me. So do the math. The, it, it would still consider wetlands. At, at least-
I'm just talking about the regulations that apply to them.
Yeah, but this is what I was told, that we, they, they don't want excavators. They don't want bulldozers. They don't want trucks tearing up the wetlands. That's what I was told. And that was three hours ago, me. Cause when I bought the house, my thinking was, I wanted to build something on it, shop, a place to, to build something for my wife, um, so she could, like an art studio.
Yeah.
And they said, no, because it's a wetland. And I said, fair enough.
Probably those two thousand and three rules.
Anyway, I just, I just, I just hope that, um, I just hope the builder is understanding what, what he's doing. And I, and I just hope that he, that, that it's, um, you know, um, I, I understand I have to make a living. Um, but I, I just hope that, um, there's no selfishness being taken, taken place. Um, you know, consideration of the, the people around. So, anyway.
Thanks for your testimony.
Three of them need to come back next.
All right. Next up, opposition.
Four.
Name and address, please.
My name is Daniel Kepke. I live at three-four-eight-one-five Westboro Way. Um, I, I have the same concerns about being selfish, a little selfishness there too. I, I understand making a living, but a lot of people in that neighborhood put a lot of pride into it and there's a lot of young kids running around those streets and we'll get a whole lot busier. And the thing that's just struck me is last summer, we had a police officer come around and want us to clean the neighborhood up. Just small things, but one of them was mow the field that we're talking about here. And that's just a little thing to do to keep the fire down and, and that never happened. So just a little question of, you know, how much I want to take people's words on things right now. That's about it. I just, you know, really hate people come in and take advantage of a lot of people's hard work and, I don't, there's a whole lot of area around here to want to build in that one spot so badly. Just really, I don't know. I don't know how that flies. But anyway, thank you guys.
Where did you say you lived, sir?
Three-four-eight-one-five.
No, what street?
Westboro.
Oh, okay.
Right there by that.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else in opposition of the application? See none. Uh, any rebuttal by the applicant? That's just you?
Like I said, most of their questions are a little far, a little too early for the engineer will address most of the water issues. Just to assure everybody, I don't, I think they know me very well, the quality product I build and I would never build a wetland. The city won't let me build in a wetland. We have rules now that won't let me and I would never do that. I, I live here. I will live here forever. I watch, I see my customers every day. It's not, I'm not that type of person, okay? I just want them to be assured that I'm not just a fly-by-night guy. I'm not, I'm not the guy that developed their property, okay? I didn't do that. So I'm a different person. So we will address that with the engineer and like I said, he, he will, he will hear from me tomorrow.
He don't have to pay him for-
But they will be addressed at, at that issue, at that point, you know, with the, with the development phase of it.
And I assume that, you know, the houses would have stormwater systems hooked up to the city and that sort of thing.
It's all in the development stage.
Right.
And, and I can't say what their builder did. I wasn't involved with that process, you know? So I don't know what they did at that point, you know? That's not, that's not how I build homes. I'm not their builder. So just to sure, don't, don't put me in the same boat as their builder, okay? Okay, thank you.
I'm possibly speaking out of turn for them. I think they fear it might get worse because of additional-
But the engineer has not done the development phase of it yet.
That's right. So there's, we, we can't even know that now, but that's, I think, the worry. And hopefully when the engineer brings the information, we'll all have less, less to worry about.
Yes. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Well, for the next, so next time we come here, there'll be a wetland mitigation plan and all those questions.
Well, Jacob's got to have the application and it sounds like it's coming.
Yeah. So you will receive notice of that public hearing of the subdivision and, um, there'll be a lot more details than in this case because then we'll be talking about, you know, all the details that go into the subdivision. Or the streets, how are the lots set up? Um, what's going on with the wetland? So, yeah, that's-
They have to follow the same process. See what's kind of, uh, wishy-washy about that is, there's, there's federal, there's state, um, acknowledged lands. This is, are you, are you going by the same rules and laws as the state is?
There are, there are three, I'm sorry. There are three layers of bureaucracy when it comes to wetland protections. First, is it a water of the state and the federal government? Um, this is a water of the state. They've had what's called a wetland delineation by the Oregon Division of State Lands. Um, and so the state does have jurisdiction. And what the state says generally is if you impact more than fifty cubic yards, then you got some problems. Now, the federal government, um, they're always kind of weird and, and I've talked to them and I don't quite understand their rules, but usually dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers with them. Um, now the city's rules, we either have significant wetlands or not significant. If they're not significant, then the only, only layers that apply are the state and federal. If they are significant, then you have state, federal, and local. Now, our local standards look at wetlands and we classify them as a type one or type two. The difference between the two is how much of a protection zone upland from the wetland is also protected as if it was a resource. And that's something that, um, the state and feds don't have. So where the state and feds may protect the wetland itself, our local rules protect a certain distance beyond that wetland edge and which is the case here. It's a type two wetland and so there's the wetland and then fifty, also another fifty foot. Um, and the, the subdivision, I know we're jumping the gun, um, we have rules that are very specific about minimizing loss of the wetland. And, um, there is some flexibility on playing with the protection zone and that's what the development has. They're, they're playing with that fifty foot, but there's no encroachment whatsoever into the delineated wetland itself.
Okay. No city attorney. Uh, this matter's returned to the table for deliberations and oral recommendations. What responsibility, maybe this is jumping the gun, but what responsibility does the city have to, um, reduce, uh, impact of, uh, uh, drainage on the, in a proposed development or neighborhoods?
Well, this, this is typically something, uh, dealt with our engineering department. And so it's not, I'm not, uh, the expert on it. But basically they look at, uh, pre-development conditions and post-development conditions. And, um, you know, the overall goal is not to create new impacts to surrounding properties. And so it's, you have detention and conveyance and, um, depending on your jurisdiction, uh, water quality, um, too.
So my re- my request, I think, since this has to come up before us again, when we do a site design review, is to either have a representative of the engineering department, since this has become, apparently it's going to be a major issue, um, have a representative of the engineering department or have a report from the engineering department about mitigation and how they see it, because this is going to come up again next month and we want to be proactive, not reactive. Anyway, that's my recommendation.
Good idea.
I don't know that we can do much about, to address this tonight, since it's not a subject for- Well, we're not, it's just the overlay zoning where- That's what I'm saying.
We're overlaying.
Yeah. So, not any other comments?
I, I think there is so much left that is unknown. It's difficult to even know what the question is.
Well, this is the first step to-
You're talking about next month's questions.
We're talking about next month's questions. So-
We need to be back on hand on what we're supposed to be doing here.
Right.
The overlay. But it's given everybody homework. We'll see everybody next month.
All right. Where are we? That's, now everybody's finished deliberating. Um, all right. So do you need a motion, Mr. Chairman? Need a motion? So I would make a recommendation that, uh, we recommend to the city council approval of the overlay as proposed with the condition that was outlined in the staff report.
I second that.
Were you going to add the caveat of the mitigation of what you'd said earlier?
Well, that's, that's kind of a separate-
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's-
That's for next.
That's next month.
That's loud and clear, obviously.
Okay.
This, this, these processes and ending up being separated- This, this, these processes and ending up being separated is probably a blessing in disguise. Cause that way Rich knows that's a hot topic, we know it's a particularly hot topic. And, and so everybody knows that's something that needs to be addressed 150%. Which, which may make future hearings, uh, more efficient because if we had everything tonight and those answers weren't clear, the hearings may be continued and so.
Okay, we found a motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
Yeah. And the, the motion did include that both lots shall be.
Yes, yep, that was, I heard it.
Yeah.
All right. Just wanted to make sure. So bring your concerns next month.
Yes.
Okay, acceptance agenda, planning administrators, site design review, um, replace old equipment, Milton Way.
Remind us what that was.
Uh, that sounds like a communication antenna.
Oh, that's right.
All right, yeah.
I saw move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all approved?
Okay.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
I think they heard the motion.
I need to hear the motion again.
Yeah.
Oh.
The motion was to approve the site design review, Milton Way, acceptance agenda. Uh, cell tower replacement, I guess. It was in our, uh, we got it by email.
Email came to you.
I haven't seen it.
Really?
Yep, it's out there.
It's not very exciting.
No.
It's just replacement of equipment on a, a communication tower.
Same tower, just equipment change.
Same tower, just what they're up above there.
Thank you.
Okay, um, it was approved. And no opposition?
We didn't do a vote, did we?
We did, we did. We're moving on.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I mean, we'll, we'll do the vote again. Aye.
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 Right, opposition? Hearing none.
All right.
Okay, moved and approved. Planning director decision previously emailed to the commission. Do you want me to read through these or are you, we just gonna go?
No.
Okay.
We got them all.
Make a motion, we accept them all.
Second.
Second. It's been, an approval?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, approved.
They're gonna approve it, we're gonna oppose it, we win.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can count.
Okay.
Two, three.
All right, planning department activity reports, February.
Um, I don't have anything to talk about that, but I do have something to talk about next month. So.
We're gonna get the bed rose, sounds like it's gonna be a long meeting.
Yeah, it's gonna be potentially a long meeting. Um, so it's, it's very likely that we'll have the subdivision that was the subject here. And another thing that we could potentially have is discussing auxiliary dwelling units. Um, that may be time permitting though. Um, and then another thing we have, we've had two kind of easy months. So it's, we're in due for another brutal one where the snacks are necessary. Is we're, we're in the middle of this, um, riverfront connector corridor plan. And some of you may know more about that than others. Remember the corridor plan we worked on a couple of years ago? Um, it's another one of those. And programmed into that are, um, meetings with the planning commission. And, um, on our schedule, that is for April. So I wasn't sure, we kind of, we had a, a committee meeting today. And at the end, we kind of started talking about scheduling. And I just wanted to pick the commission's brain that, um, would you be willing, able, or do you care if we started at six for the purposes of that corridor plan?
How long do you need?
Um, I don't know. It seemed like we could probably get through all that stuff in an hour.
It's like 45 minutes.
And we can condense it, yeah, I mean.
They can talk fast.
Why, why not?
Oh, I, yeah, I can be here at six, I just.
And it's, it's not something that you have to make a decision on, it's something you'll make a decision on.
Down the road.
Yeah, eventually, this is just, you know, um, the first, here are some facts to consider, here's the existing conditions, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Give us a fast dog and pony show, not the slow.
It might also be interactive, they might be asking you for feedback, um, related to design.
But if we have, if we have a goal of keeping it within 45 minutes, we go to an hour, that's fine. We start out an hour and then it goes to an hour and 15 minutes, an hour and a half, you know? Let's try and keep it low.
Do we have the old plan to review or do we get something new from you?
That they have a half hour.
This is, this is new, there's no plan, we're developing the plan.
Yeah.
Well.
This is, this is your toolkit.
We're gonna talk fast.
So anyway, that would be my recommendation.
All the information is on the city's website, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so you can look in.
Oh, that's, yeah.
It's on a project website, um, not the city's.
Oh, okay.
I think it's, um, I can look right now, I think it's just Riverfront Connector.
So I, right now, I'm just kind of evaluating our options, so when we have the discussion, we can say, yeah, well, we can probably meet a little later.
It would be, I, I would be favorable to start at six.
And, and you know, we don't need a quorum, it'd be nice if everybody could show, but if it's a challenge for someone, I wouldn't feel guilty about it. But it seems like nobody's giving me a dirty look for saying six o'clock.
What's the website called?
I'm trying to find it right now.
Okay.
And you'll con, consent to Greg's 45 minute?
Well, it's a wonderful goal and I hope that.
That's all it is, is a goal.
I don't think that we have control over it as much as we wish we did.
Yeah, if we all got up and left there for 45 minutes.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, solidarity.
There you go.
Okay, it's riverfrontconnectorplan.com. And if you go, so this is what the website looks like. And there's a tab called project documents. And their goal is to just go over these technical memos that are here. I think one of.
Going through the city website for that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Is this a search that we do through the city website?
No, this is its own website, so the consultants made a website for the project.
It was the St. Helens Riverfront Connector.
No.
It's just.
Riverfrontconnectorplan.com is the URL. If you type that in your URL, it'll work.
Basically what happened is part of our waterfront plan, um, we identified some problem intersections. And like, oh, oh, this is something we gotta solve. And so we applied for a transportation growth management grant. And, uh, got it and here we go, here we go again.
All right. Well, you know, the people that are gonna be presenting this, they're gonna want to drag it out because they get paid by the word, so.
No, they're, um.
We, we don't get paid by the word, we get paid by a short.
I mean, I've only been to the one meeting because I had to miss today, but they seem like they're very on point and.
Good, good, that's great.
Yeah, and it's, it's not a torture test for the commission, plus we have snacks now.
Hot dogs. I mean, we've been through this before.
We know them and they used to be more drawn out, I noticed the more times we worked with this group, the more succinct their process gets because they know the names of the streets, they know the traffic issues, so we're not starting blind.
Well, they also see us nodding off faster too.
There's that. But I mean, I've noticed just as a councilperson, they're getting better because they know what we're talking about, about uptown, downtown, on the highway, and they already know the trigger spots. We don't have to educate them about that, so.
That's good.
Seems to go a little quicker.
Good. So the only other recommendation I, request I would put in is, would you please ask Sue? I mean, we don't ask her to come very often, but I think she needs to be here.
Yeah, I'll, um.
This is gonna be a big thing.
Uh, and, and I haven't, I mean, I've been focusing a lot of, you know, lots and streets and I, I haven't focused on the drainage part more, but yeah, we definitely need.
Sue's the city's engineer.
Yeah, I'll see if she can, just cause she has attended them on, on rare occasions.
Very sought, I mean, I know she comes to city council meetings, but she doesn't.
But obviously there's, there's, there's grave concern.
Yeah, and I'm concerned.
Yeah, and I don't know what's up with the culvert not being maintained, want to talk to Neil Shepherd, see what's going on.
Find that out, but. But I, I'm learning something and you know, that, that whoever was, they said that, and I can, I can attest to that, skunks love culverts. I don't know what it is, I, I'm serious. Around our property, there are culverts around the entire length of the street. And there are skunks every 15 feet or so. And that's all they do is they sleep in there and. Do, I, I don't know what it is, I never heard of that before, but skunk-cult.
So if, if you love your neighbor, install culverts by the property line.
I'll give you my nutria too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Started coming from the river now, all the way to my yard.
Anyway, so don't put anything more on your agenda, the agenda for April's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we may have the ADU thing, but that's, that could be time permitting.
Is that gonna be citywide?
Auxiliary, auxiliary dwelling unit. Yeah, so, uh, so about that, so you all know what auxiliary dwelling units are?
We build them.
Been in the press quite a bit.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and then there's a, and we have rules on the books, actually. We've had rules in the books longer than I've worked here, although nobody's ever used them. Um, and they require a conditional use permit now and they would come before you.
Was that what Red Leaf was?
No, no, no.
Is this the caregivers that live in a, in a mobile home on the property?
No, no, that's, that's a separate thing. This, this would be a permanent secondary and subordinate dwelling unit on a lot with the house.
Called a grandma's house or mama's house.
Yeah.
In last week.
They're bigger, big important.
And, and the state, um, came out with a law that mandates them for cities with the population over, what was it? By, yeah, which obviously applies to us. We have rules and we believe that the rules apply, um, but they're, they could be improved and we figured, well, we might as well get them fixed up, so we, we know we're in compliance by the, uh, July deadline. So it's something that, it's kind of being, um, forced on cities and but it gives us an opportunity to, to fix our laws, to make them make more sense and so we get to go through that.
Not many lots around here that still have that much land with the recreation vehicles, the boats, the extra cars, the kids' toys, the storage sheds, there's not much space on the lot.
Yeah, law coverage will be one of the things to talk about.
She should.
All right. Okay, um, did we follow information? Have we done that?
I, yeah, I don't have anything else.
Okay, anything city council's got going on?
Um, they had a merchants meeting last month. Um, some issues were brought forward about city service to business at all levels. And the city is looking at all those, made a list of five of the items. They're gonna meet again the 27th of this month and go through, we fixed those five, what are the next group? Um, just really plowing through because every member of the council's heard nothing, nobody says anything nice, they always have complaints. So we're trying to start plowing through that. And so if this auxiliary dwelling unit, customer service, all those things are not meant to be a slight to the planner, a slight to the city staff, it's just meant as how can we do this better? As we're growing so fast, how can we be more efficient? And though, so some of that might touch this group. So just to know that that's not singling out the planning commission, that's an overall looking at our system as we grow quicker, how can we do better?
And give us more power. Okay, anything else? Okay, meeting adjourned?